2020, I would now like to call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order. This is our annual, this is our monthly meeting. I am Holly Darlo Babcock, presiding as chair. To my left is Tom Solon, our vice chair, Beth Williams, Kate Stoll, our school board members, Tim Grison, the principal of the middle school. Coming around to my right is our superintendent, Andy Corey, assistant superintendent in charge of student services, Bob Thompson is on his right, then Krista Whalen and Liz Brown are other school board members. Cindy Van Conan is, has an excused absence but will be joining us at some point either for deliberations or, yes, for deliberations. And Rick Barnes, principal of the middle school, uh, the high school, sorry, will be joining us later through a conference call, right? So I'd like to appoint a process observer. Does anybody like to volunteer for that? Tom? And then do we have any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to add a discussion. On your desk when you came in is a revenue and expense report. So I'd like to add a discussion on that. And I'd also just like to, as our first discussion on this topic of discussions, is just give you an update on COVID.
Okay, so you're adding that as a...
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. So we have some minutes to approve. The first batch of minutes, how many do we have actually? Three sets of minutes to approve. Um, the first batch of minutes is from November 18th, 2020. I need to, I need, I'll need a motion to accept these, the minutes with these amendments. I will read them. Page four, line 22, replace remotely with remote. Page seven, line 24, capitalize chemistry at the start of the sentence. Page nine, line 36, insert Vice Chairman Solon stepped down and Chairman Darlo Babcock presided. Page 14, line 17, delete if. Page 14, line 46, correct the spelling of handling. Page 15, line 10, student should be plural. Page 17, line 20, 31, delete two before the class. And page 20, line 32, replace monetary with non-monetary. Do you have a motion? Motion by Beth, seconded by Tom Solon. Okay, I believe we were all here, so all in favor? That is a six oh, motion carries. We have public hearing minutes from the very same night, November 18th, 2020, with one amendment, correct line one, page one, line one, correct board name. I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Beth, and seconded by Tom. All in favor? And that's a six oh vote, and that motion carries. And we have another set of non-public minutes from November 18th, 2020, with no amendments. I need a motion to accept.
Sorry.
That's okay. Let's keep it rolling. Tom is seconding those. Any discussion? All in favor? And again, six zero, motion carries. At this point, I would like to, oh, wait. Yeah, so we're gonna move to, I'm a little, we're a little, we're gonna have our district moderator, Drew Mason, come to the microphone. He has a little bit of a discussion he'd like to lead us through regarding the annual meeting. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, Holly. I'm Drew Mason, Baxter Road Hollis, and I'm the district moderator. I'm also the town moderator. I gave Holly, and I hope she distributed to the rest of you, a description of an alternate process that is approved by the legislature and signed by the governor for dealing with both annual meetings and elections.
To be fair, Drew, I did distribute it, but today, so they may not have had a chance to read it all.
All right. Before I get into the details, it is my recommendation that all five districts involved follow this process. That would be Hollis Town, Brookline Town, Brookline School District, Hollis School District, and the co-op. It'll make it easier for everybody if they all do it the same way, whichever way. It is up to the governing board of each district to choose which method and decide on some of the alternatives. I spoke to the Hollis Select Board on Monday, and it sounded to me like two of the members were in support, and the other three didn't give me any indication either way. The way this process works is a bit like what we did last summer, but it's a bigger scale, and it's got some more complicated pieces. The first thing you have to do is send out a letter to all registered voters in, in the district. So that's not households, that's voters. There are roughly 11,650 registered voters in Hollis and Brookline. That letter describes the process, announces the schedule, and, and talks about the first virtual meeting that needs to be conducted. The first meeting is to present the rules and to present the warrants. And so it would be sort of like a deliberative session for SB two, except it is up to the governing body to decide if they want to allow public input. But I would expect the budget committee to make their presentations, and so on and so forth. Then that follows a period of up to seven days to accept public comment, and that I would recommend that those be accepted in written form, not as voicemail, but that's your choice. Then there is a second virtual meeting that allows the governing board to decide on the final warrant. Again, that is, it is up to the governing board whether they wish to have public comment or input at that meeting. I can tell you that I did get a few negative comments about the no-input virtual meeting we held last time, but it is what it is. At that point, you, the governing body needs to finalize the ballot, and I also strongly recommend that we print the ballots in a form to use the AccuVote machines, because it took us five hours to count just 10 or 11 questions, and with something like nine different ballots of I don't know how many pages, it's gonna take a long time to count them. And then you, we conduct a drive-through vote. It'll be bigger, and it'll be in March, not on a fine sunny day in June, so that's also gonna be a challenge. And the recommendation of the New Hampshire Municipal Association is that we do it all on voting, on the normal voting day, which is March 9th, I believe. Constructing a timeline here is gonna be a challenge. I don't know, I haven't talked to the, any of the clerks to know how long it takes to print and the ballots in AccuVote format. But you're gonna have to push back the public hearings to 25 days before the first meeting, and petition articles are five Tuesdays before the first meeting. So that's, depending on how well we can mesh the schedules for five districts, that could be third or fourth week of January or even earlier. Let's see. That's, that's an overview of the process, and I've asked the Hollis Select Board to make their decision no later than January 11th, which is their next meeting. But I don't know how Brookline would choose to do a drive-through vote. We know how to do one here, but it would make extensive use of the school facilities, which again requires, shall we say, approval from the school board and the administration. So with that overview, any questions?
I just wanna clarify, so, so all, so every, all voting would happen on that one drive-through day?
Yes.
For the town, for both towns?
Right.
For the, for both school districts and for the co-op?
Yes.
So that's why it would be a huge day of voting?
And unlike last summer, Hollis voters only would vote here?
Right.
On all their warrants?
Right, I got you.
And the Brookline voters would vote in Brookline.
And so I'm, I'm just gonna ask all my questions at once, then flip and flip to other people. So the, so you, the idea is to do it on the day that we would usually just vote for board, but that ballot would also be part of it?
Yes.
Like the board member, the, the Australian ballot that we do on March 9th would be part of this, so, okay. And then I read through this, so this allows for public input, but it doesn't really address amendments to the ballot. We would be making that decision, the governing body, because there's no way to vote on amendments?
There is no way for the public to vote on amendments. However, you will get public comments, and some of those presumably will be proposed amendments.
But to clarify, last year, when we did this in the summer, we did allow for public comment in the Zoom meeting. We just didn't allow for amendments. So this process doesn't really allow for amendments either?
At the virtual meeting, no.
Because you can't possibly vote in a virtual meeting, because we can't check registrations and all of that, so.
Yes, Zoom meetings are difficult enough. Trying to add that on top is more than...
So it's very similar to what we did last year?
Yes.
Except for the fact that it's two virtual meetings. One where we get public comment, then we receive more public, well, we can decide whether or not we want to take public comment in virtual meeting. Then we can receive emails, and then we can come back and finalize the ballot.
Yes.
But the timing of that is questionable, because you don't know how long it takes to print one of those autumn, what did you call it?
I, I don't know. I mean, clearly, just about every city and town in, in New Hampshire manages to do it in a fairly short window, but I don't know whether it takes two weeks or three weeks or, or what.
Right. So that's the question about the timing of all of this?
Yeah.
But it's just the seven days, and this is all the New Hampshire Municipal Association's guidance. None of this is set by RSA or by executive order or anything?
That, no, the, if you, if you look at the last page, it is an extract of House Bill 1129?
Okay.
That was indeed passed and signed by the governor.
Okay. Thank you. I don't, anyway, other questions? Yeah?
I see that you're, you're suggesting that they're all done on the same day, but that isn't a requirement.
Well, it's not exactly a requirement. It's a strong recommendation by the Municipal Association.
Right.
And there is statutory language talking about voting day. And the towns would, would probably have to vote on the 9th, no matter what, for the town, for the, what would normally be on the ballots. But I can't assert categorically that it is required to be on March 9th.
And there would still be, on the SAU budget, there would still be the question on the town ballot and the school district ballot, correct?
Yes.
And one of the big changes from what we did in the past is that you can't get the ballots ahead of time. So people would have to stop at the voting location and fill out all the ballots, so.
Yes.
There's gonna be...
Because last time, we gave the ballots out ahead of time, right?
Yes.
We allowed them to print them, but you wouldn't be allowing them to print them. They'd have to fill everything in.
You can print it, you just can't use that.
You'd have to fill it in your...
That's not an official ballot.
Right, yeah.
That's really tricky.
They say, make a, a sample ballot available, but the official ballot has to be picked up and...
Right, because it's that special thing that has to go through the machine.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's not the reason. I think the right reason why is to avoid fraudulent voting, but.
Right, gotcha.
That January 11th date, Drew?
Yeah.
Can you just give a little background on how, how that was arrived at, and so that we can figure out what it would be for us?
January 11th is the next Select Board meeting. That's all.
Right, but, but from the standpoint of when the decision actually needs to be made to make it work, do you know how much before March 9th that has to happen?
Well, I don't, and it, I, I need to figure out if, if the districts are interested in pursuing this path. My wild guess is you'd have to start the public hearings in the third or fourth week of January.
Because our, our meeting won't be until the third week of January.
The 20th would be our meeting, yeah.
Well, yes, it, all of us were, will have to dig in and review our schedules and maybe do some other things.
But I'm trying to figure out if it's incumbent upon us to make a decision tonight?
Decision tonight, yeah.
Because if we don't make a decision tonight, we don't, we don't have a regular convened opportunity to talk about it till the 20th of January, which from what you're describing might be too late.
It would.
We have a special meeting.
Right.
Earlier in January.
Yep. Yeah, unless we do something extraordinary for it.
Well, I think that's what Drew was implying, that we might want to do.
Well, he picked the 9th, he picked the 9th because that's their meeting, so I was trying to understand, is the 20th soon enough for us to talk about it?
I don't think it is, because you're talking about...
You have to notice a public hearing, so that's, I don't know how many days notice it is for a public hearing on, you know, on the budget and so on and so forth.
Isn't it five, Andy?
Five days.
If, to, to help the board out, if you went in, you pack it?
Yeah.
You have our annual meeting calendar. If, if you look at the Brookline calendar, because that is SB two, this is the closest you'd be to a calendar, and where it presents some issues, I think, for the, the co-op potentially, you'd have to post your public hearing by at least the 15th, not, but we're talking two meetings, so there's a difficulty there. But one that worries me is, right now, the last day to do negotiated cost items is the 30th of January. If you went to similar SB two as Drew's describing, you're talking about the 12th of January. That puts a lot of pressure on contract negotiations. I'm not sure we can get that done. And then you're also looking at 112 for petition articles as opposed to 21. So I think, just looking at the co-op at Hollis compared to Brookline gives you a good idea of what you're looking at.
Yeah, particularly where, where the contracts are, are being discussed, because when's the, when, what was our deadline for if we want to get it in front of the Budget Committee? That's later, later than that in, in January. Was it the 28th?
It was later. It was their meeting, their January meeting, basically, with the date.
Yeah, it was like the third week.
From what you're describing, Drew, this may not be possible.
Hey Drew, is it, is that March 9th date? Like, is that really that, is that by RSA or anything? Is that really that important?
For, for local voting day, it is specified by RSA. There are procedures to postpone it, for example, for weather, but...
Okay, but, but if we're talking about, if we're talking about our meeting day?
Yeah.
Could we, I'm concerned about that day for two reasons. One, I don't know if we can make it happen, but also, we're, we're talking about having people vote on like five, basically five meetings, five town meetings, except Brookline's SB two for one of those. So four town meetings. We're saying we're gonna put that on a Tuesday, when people have to work, and, so it just seems to me like, wouldn't it be, we did it this last time on a Saturday. I mean, wouldn't it be better to have this big, huge voting thing happen on a, on a later Saturday, so that more people could access the vote and...
And the volunteers.
And the volunteers and all the work. I just, it worries me that it's a day in the middle of the week, and it's so many ballots.
It worries me too. I, there are definite logistical problems here.
And to give us a little more time, if we did it towards the end of March, we'd have, would that change the dates by a lot, like?
Well, I mean, if you look at the, again, the calendar, the co-op was scheduled to have their annual meeting on the 2nd of March.
Right, we were real early, yeah.
So we were the earliest. And Hollis was the 10th, so we're, we're in the ballpark that it could work. I'm just more worried about the sheer volume, because now I have to drive up, get my ballot, I have to pull over and park or go into a building and fill it out.
Right.
And then I have to drive to wherever the collection point is for those, for those ballots.
Because we would basically drive up, get a Hollis School District ballot, a Hollis Town ballot, and then a co-op ballot.
Co-op.
And then Brookline would do the same.
The three ballots.
At least have three ballots.
Right.
Plus the voting ballot, plus the, plus the, plus the election ballot.
It'd be for all the members.
Like for the board members and for the reps and whatever.
But that's on the, okay, so, yeah.
That's not on the, that's not on the town ballot.
It would be a single ballot, it'd be twice as big as it would normally is.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, you have your, you have your...
It might be more than one page.
Right, right.
But it's, all the stuff for the town, all the stuff for the elementary district.
We have the warrant, then you have the election ballot, which is a different ballot.
But that's for the town. That's, we're, we're, it's semantics.
Yeah, it's just different. It's four different ballots.
But I don't see anything in, in HB 1129 that talks about dates. And I, and I don't, they talk about the seven days and things, but I, I know that our normal voting session is not governed by that March 9th date for this, for this district?
Right.
Because we do it in meeting format.
Right.
So if you're, if you're normally a, a meeting, a town meeting, voting district, does that March 9th date apply as a, as a requirement? I understand the, the desire to potentially only do it once, but is there any RSA requirement for a town meeting district to use that? Or what, what are the guidelines?
For a town meeting, the, the basic requirement is voting day is the 2nd Tuesday in March. The annual meeting has to be within a certain, certain point, but I don't recall what that is. For the school, I believe it has to be in March, but it doesn't have to be anywhere in particular. Now, given the state of emergency, or however you want?
The year.
I am, I am guessing, or hoping, that there is some flexibility to declare that due to the COVID emergency, we, we are changing our annual meeting to blah, blah, blah dates. But I don't, at this time, have any, any opinions from the Secretary of State's office that that's okay.
So Drew, there's some, there's some language on the New Hampshire Department of State on the election page right now, that I, I don't have any clue what it means. But, so it says New Hampshire election dates, it lists the dates, and says town elections March 9, 21. Alternate town elections, May 11, 21.
Yes.
What's that May 11 date?
There is a provision in one of the RSAs that allows the town meeting to vote on, at the meeting, to start, for subsequent years, to move the entire meeting date to May. So you can change the entire process, but you have to do it at an annual meeting.
At an annual meeting. Okay, shocks. Because I was just thinking, as we were thinking about timelines?
Yeah.
That with the contract negotiations going on, that May date seems a lot more doable, but shocks.
May I recommend that, possibly, I know having another meeting isn't anyone's favorite thing, but even if we did a Zoom meeting or something right at the beginning of January, we could take this all in. We might have a better idea of where contracts are going at that point, and, and maybe try to figure out where to go. But I don't know if we can make that decision today, and we obviously can't wait until the 20th.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. I mean, the structure that you've laid out makes perfect sense. It's the dates. It's trying to figure out how to do it with the dates and, and make sure that we have everything, all of our ducks in a row to present a warrant. I don't have concerns about the structure of the, I mean, I am concerned about not being able to allow the legislative body to make amendments, but it doesn't, it seems like we might have to let that go again, which would be probably a lot of heat we would get on that. But I'm just concerned about trying to squeeze it in, and I am concerned about trying to do that kind of drive-through vote on a Tuesday.
I'm concerned about doing it in March, because I'm one of the people who has to stand outside for 12 hours.
Well, and I have some concerns about that as well. I mean, the cold and, because we were all out there for, you know, eight to 10 hours, and, and our staff, you know?
Yeah.
Everyone was, and, and it seems like, and, and the other thing is, is like, to be honest, we played with the idea of an outdoor meeting, and that might be something to consider too. So I would like to have a little more information on January.
I will, I, I am hoping very much that the Secretary of State's office is gonna provide some more guidance on, on how to do it, and how to postpone the schedule and so on. They're still recovering from the general election, so, you know, they're just now turning their thoughts to this kind of stuff. But my sources in, at the state level are saying, stay tuned, more guidance is coming.
So I think Chris's suggestion would be great, like if we could meet as, have a Zoom meeting in January, since our schools are closed through, what, potentially could be, not closed, they will be, the buildings will be, the students won't be coming.
Barely remote.
Remote, thank you. Yeah, so maybe the very beginning of January to do a Zoom meeting, a Zoom call, to go over some of this. Is that something that works for you, Drew? Should we set a date for that now, so that it would be?
No.
Helpful to you, and that way you can, as you go through, because you're meeting with the Hollis School Board, I assume, and the Brookline School Board?
Um...
You're not, well, you would be...
I'm, I'm not, but Jim Belander is the moderator.
Jim Belander.
I know he and Andy have, have talked, and I think they're gonna basically follow what the co-op does.
Can I just ask the board, is, is, in terms of the structure of this particular format, is anybody struggling with that?
Only the, only the, the actual logistics of executing of the vote.
Okay, but the, but the idea of having the two virtual meetings and the drive-through, not your, not your favorite thing?
No, but we, we made it work and...
We're all sitting here in masks. We really haven't had our favorite thing, so we really haven't. So I think Tom is doing the same thing I am. Like, it just, I don't like it, but it seems reasonable. I'm not, I can't come up with anything that seems more reasonable off the fly, and it doesn't necessarily look like the Secretary of State of the state's going to give us alternatives, so.
Well, the alternative is a traditional meeting, just like, you know, except, you know, we're gonna have to spread them out and...
We have a great turf field. Okay, so...
I, I do think that the, having all, having this voting process on a normal weekday is a, it may not be possible.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that too.
Especially, you know, we're, we don't know what March holds, but whether students are in-person learning at the time or not.
Yeah.
But if they are, that creates issues. If they aren't, that's still issues.
They have that day off from school. That, that's usually, isn't that the...
Usually in March, we're not, because they usually vote at the bar, and, and we have school.
Oh.
But, yeah, my concern would be, I'd wanna know, would the state allow the 9th to become either the 6th or the 13th on a Saturday, because I'm worried about dock this. We can't start early, you're gonna have people out there in the dock.
Yeah.
And number two, I, I can't get my staff to give up a Tuesday, because we'll be with kids.
Right.
And I don't know if we'll have the volunteers, and sometimes the state fails to, you know, realize that this has to be executed. You know, it's nice to have rules, but execution is important.
Yeah. I, I hear all your concerns, and I certainly share them.
Yep.
But I wanted to get in front of you with what I knew, rather than wait till I have all the...
No, it's great. We're glad you're here.
We're not shooting the messenger.
So do you want to try to do the 6th of January? Is that a date that people can work? I don't know. I'm just throwing out a Wednesday. For some reason, I feel like I have something on my calendar that day, but...
Drew, my question is, not to say that a bunch of people complaining is always useful, but who would we direct such comments as, this isn't practical, which are asking us to do, we can't pull off because we won't have the volunteers? Maybe if people get emails and correspondence to that effect, they will build some flexibility in. So who would be the person to direct that to?
Secretary of State.
Okay.
Or the, the office, anyway.
So, just, just to look at dates, if, if we use Andy's model, that 113 would be the date for potentially that first meeting, then that means we have had to have mailed to everyone for their receipt?
The letter.
The letter before the 7th.
Yep. No, no, the first, well, I'm talking about the ordinary public hearings need to be at the end of January, not, not the first virtual meeting.
The meeting doesn't have to get a letter?
The meeting, the, I don't know, it's standard notice requirements for a public hearing.
Okay.
The, the, the virtual meetings would presumably be in February.
Right, and the, and the, the letter has to go out seven days prior to the first virtual session.
Right.
So what Drew's trying to get us, right, we'd still have to have our public hearings for our warrant in January.
So that public hearing is not the, is not considered to be the same as the first? Okay.
No, the virtual meeting is sort of like the first meeting of the town.
Like a deliberative session.
It's a deliberative session.
Okay.
So maybe that'll be good because maybe that'll encourage people to actually come to our public hearings regarding the warrants and if they want to effectuate change of the warrant language.
What, are we saying we're having that in person?
You can have that in Zoom.
Okay. We could have that in Zoom. There's no reason we can't. We typically would do it in person and.
We've been having all our other public hearings in person.
We typically can have a public hearing and a regular school board meeting because we only have two people show up.
Right.
So it wouldn't even be a COVID concern.
So what I would like.
Do you wonder if it's going to be different this year?
What I'd like to try and do now is come up with a date where this board will, will reconvene and, and figure out a little bit more direction to give to Drew.
Okay.
And so I threw out the date, January 6th, which is a Wednesday because we generally meet on Wednesdays, and it's the first available Wednesday in January, so we can't meet any sooner in January. So is that a date that works for everyone? It would be a Zoom call. Is that a date that would work for you, Drew?
Yes.
So can we put that on the SAU? Is that something that works for you, Andy? You probably need to be present for that.
I think it'll work because you're getting it first. My, my guess is, to Drew's point, there's going to be, need to be a number of these. So we'll, we'll figure out how to make them all work.
Right, okay.
This letter that goes out, if we all agreed to do this, would it be one letter that was being sent?
I, I think if, with, if enough cooperation, it could be one letter sent from Hollis and one letter sent from Brookline, and because it's not personalized, I imagine you can use bulk mail rates, if that's, if that's a concern.
I was just asking, was the co-op was sending a letter, Hollis district was sending a letter?
It would be cleaner if it was all one letter from all the boards, but we all have to agree.
It'd be a package like this.
So we'll do a Zoom meeting at 6 o'clock on Ju, January 6th.
Can you do it later?
6:30?
No, for me to get someplace to do a Zoom meeting, I.
Okay, so does 6:30 work?
Yeah, if that's what it has to be.
Seven?
Later the better, but.
It's fine. If it's Zoom for me, seven's fine. Does seven work for everyone else? Seven, okay, Andy? Okay. So 7 o'clock, Drew, on January 6th, we'll reconvene as a Zoom. We need to notice that, publicly notice that, and we'll make a Zoom link, a public Zoom link, and then we'll talk further about this and, and kind of clarify any of our questions and come up with a calendar at that meeting. I think is that pretty clean and clear to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate you bringing, I know you have to scoot too, so. I really appreciate you bringing it to us and, you know, giving us an opportunity, and I don't, I think you, I think you can go to other boards and say that we support the concept, we're just struggling with the, the timing and the, the Tuesday all-day voting thing concerns us, logistics.
What should I say to the Hollis Select Board if they're wanting to hold a drive-through vote on the 9th? Not at, not at our schools?
Well, I think we'd have to talk about that a little bit more because it depends on whether or not our kids are going to be in school, because if it's, if our kids are in school, you can't, you can't use the buildings. Like that's, you know, it's not right, I mean.
Yeah, I, I'm more concerned about the doctors. I mean, if you go drive-through our schools now, that's what you're going to have at this time of night on March 9th, and that's going to be a huge concern.
Yes.
For volunteers and people, so it's, that's where I come back, it's just a safety issue. I don't know if there's any place that has what I'll call appropriate lighting.
Right.
You know, for that volume of cars.
Well, in fairness, it'll be a lot lighter in March than it is now. We're, we're a week and a half away from the shortest day of the year right now.
Yep.
It'll be lighter, but yeah.
But I think, I think logistically, I think the, the big thing is let them know that we're, we're likely to seek a, an alternative to a Tuesday voting day.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Drew. Okay, moving on to nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
Yes, I have a, a couple of things under correspondence on your desk when you came in tonight. I provided you a copy of what we call a conflict letter. The conflict letter is in relation to a discussion we've had about the SAU and rent because every board member in Hollis is also a member of the SAU board member, and the SAU board chair is a member of the Brookline Board, and the superintendent serves multiple districts. So that's just a conflict letter that was done so that it's out to the public, that if we were to move into discussions about a long-term lease for the SAU and the property, that everybody's aware that there are conflicts there. Mr. Mann would be signing that. He has, the Hollis District is using Thomas Clausen, attorney, for their piece of this, and the SAU is using Jim O'Shaughnessy, and it's just a, a procedure that has to be done where there is a conflict. I also provided you an update on your tables with the Articles of Agreement. There is no changes except for the very final appendix, all the footnotes and pieces there just to clarify dates. Instead of putting, say, 12/4/90, we wrote out December 4th, 1990, to just clarify that.
Excuse me, Andy, are we going to have a chance to talk about that at all tonight? Because if not, I want to talk about it right now.
Which one?
The Articles of Agreement.
That is on, to be voted on tonight.
Okay.
So that's definitely there. Also, I just wanted to let you know, the governor had put aside $10 million in supplemental funds that you could apply for. The co-op submitted for $11,801.66. We received $7,967.39. Those were.
Could you repeat that number?
Sure. $11,801.66 is what we put in for. We received $7,967.39. That is for expenditures that occurred from, basically I'll say the summer, since we started this budget, until December 30th. That is over and above the money we got for the $200 per student. So those were the informations you had on your table. The DEI committee has met. The minutes are posted on the SAU website, and there is a draft version of the resolution. They'll be meeting again on the 17th to try to finalize that resolution and hopefully bring something of what I'll call a larger plan to the board in the January timeframe. You can find that information under the Superintendent's Committee on the SAU website. It's also on each of the websites. We had 40 residents participate in the virtual Zoom meeting, and it went very well. And that's it for correspondence.
Thank you.
Question.
Sure.
Was any reason given for the reduced payout from the state?
They basically took the amount that was requested and then made it work so that everybody got about 70%.
So it was just prorated?
Yes.
It wasn't that they denied our claims?
No, it was prorated. It was a little frustrating because, you know, if a district had chosen to buy Plexiglas for every single desk, they might have got back 70% of that. You know, so if you look at the, the pieces there, it was kind of all over the place for the dollar amounts, you know, so it was, it was very, I'll say, a little disheartening for us because we tried to do everything to mitigate circumstances.
You almost get punished for being frugal.
Sorry. Okay, thank you very much for that. At this point, on our agenda, we're ready for public input, so I will open the floor after going over a little bit of the rules on this. If you are to address us, please address me, the chair, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to things that appear on our agenda for this month, and continue with respect. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the floor for public input. Is there anyone?
Hello, Chair.
Hi.
My name is Melissa Leclair, and my address is 16 Townsend Hill Road in Brookline, New Hampshire. I am here tonight because on the original agenda, I saw a discussion on the program of studies. I believe that, I've, I've been told that that is not on the agenda for tonight.
No, it's here. It's under deliberations, yes.
Okay, so there will be a deliberation regarding the, the program of studies and the science credits for the high school? Okay, so I came because I thought that that, there was a potential that that could happen. I'm going to go back and get my notebook because I have a couple notes.
And just, I didn't say this earlier, but we try to keep comments for about two minutes, so.
Okay, so, thank you. The proposal on the table is to reduce the science credits from, or we, we, science credits required for graduation from physical science and biological science and one additional one to just the physical science and biological science credit. The considerations there, I read the article right up, and there may be additional unstated considerations, but a lot of the rationale provided was regarding chemistry. As an engineer, as someone who values STEM and the community, I wanted to convey that I thought, at least as, as written up, the concern that chemistry is difficult for a stu, many of our students to grasp is not, the, the solution, the, the solution proposed to reduce the additional credit seems rather unrelated to the problem at hand, and I value the chemistry, the chemistry curriculum. It is fundamental in so many courses of study in college that will largely be your largest seminar class in every foundational for every science and engineering major. I wanted to indicate that if there, there used to be a class that would prepare students for entry into chemistry, and my high school senior took a physical science chemistry combo class as a freshman and found that that was a strong way to prepare himself for the chemistry classes in today. Why is chemistry important? It is one of the best ways to teach the scientific method and a hands-on way and grasp mathematical concepts as it applies to science. There are many other, many other value, value statements there that I could make, but I think the important one is, I want this to be, I want our curriculum and our requirements to reflect the values that I think this community has. I see a strong support amongst many for a, a strong STEM program, and I'd like to see that reflected by not decreasing the requirements for, for graduation. I love the abundance of classes that are options and alternatives, and recommend instead that we keep the requirement, but guide students appropriately. They don't have to take the chemistry. Perhaps we consider, consider the preparatory classes that were available before, and it, and just tailor that guidance to students who have different aspirations than maybe I might be representing exactly this message. So that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your input. We'll take it in consideration. Thank you. Any more public input? Seeing none, I'm going to close the floor for public input and move on to our principal reports. Principal Brison is here to represent both of the administrators, actually the whole team of administration, and I believe that we're going to be hearing from Mr. Barnes, but he, is he calling in now or is he calling in during deliberations, or does he want to come in now and discuss program of studies first? I think that's what he's doing.
Yeah, I think the plan was.
Okay.
And then what we would do is move the, with the board chair's permission, the board just moved the, the vote on the program of studies while Rick is on the phone.
Sure, we can do that.
Shall I present first or do you want to do?
Whatever, however you and Rick have a plan, you do it your way.
Well, I, I've got it, I got it right here, so I'll, I'll do the reports and then I'll call Rick.
Okay.
All right, so the, we'll start with athletics. Mr. Bumpus emailed me some highlights from his report that he wanted me to mention. The high school is set and ready to open their regular season practices and tryouts on this coming Monday, the 14th, with games starting in mid-January. Teams have already been participating in preseason skills work and are looking forward to the winter season. The middle school is wrapping up our one-month intramural program, basketball programs, this week. We saw high participation numbers again throughout the season as we did in the fall. We were able to offer basketball skills, inter-squad competition to 28 girls and 30 boys, so good participation numbers again in the intramural program. After much discussion and consideration in regards to remote learning for the high school student athletes, the athletic department recognizes that mandating student athletes to switch to remote learning for the duration of their season would be extremely difficult to impose on a variety of levels. Therefore, it is our recommendation to encourage student athletes to learn remotely if possible during their season, but not require it. So a recommendation to learn remotely but not require it was the, the highlight for Mr. Barnes asked me to highlight from his report that the instructional practices committee has, two of the subcommittees are reconvening, particularly the weighted versus non-weighted grading committee was planned to reconvene today, the 9th, and the grading and assessment committee is still working on a common date for members to meet at some point during the month of December. And once a decision is reached regarding adjustments to the policy on class rank, the instructional practice committee does plan to reconvene with next steps for that. Moving on to my report, I wanted to highlight two things. One, we were able to administer our spelling bee this year, which was a highlight. It was nice to see some normal type of activity. We had 11 students take part. Actually, it was, we did it live and in person. We had 11 students as finalists, and we had a winner, a back-to-back winner, actually. Noel Lazari won back-to-back. She won as a seventh grader, and she won again as an eighth grader. And her runner-up was Anya Zoltko. So it was, it was nice to see the English and reading departments put this on for our kiddos to, to be able to take part in something as, as would be offered in a normal year. Just one highlight here, HBMS is currently accepting applications for our building maintenance supervisor position. Mr. Lance Fenimore steer in that hiring committee, and we do have some, some dates booked for interviews for that. So that's it for my report, and I'm open to any questions specific to, I guess, all three.
Are there any comments or questions from anyone?
I have one question, but I'm not sure if you can answer it. It was just with the update from Brian about their decision to encourage remote learning for our high school athletes but not require it, and with the plan he presented last month, it was just for certain sports that it was being recommended, and in here it didn't say that, so I was just curious if it's still, if that's their intention was to recommend it for certain sports that they deemed higher risk and then not, it wasn't a recommendation for the others. I wasn't sure if you can.
Yeah, no, I talked to Brian about that, and he moved off of certain sports to think about remote for everyone, and then came quickly to realization it's not the best learning format for some, but there'll be specific situations where we will be asking kids to go, go remote, and I'll, I'll give you one example. Our hockey team potentially will be practicing early in the morning. You can't shower at the rink right now because of COVID, so we're going to send our athletes home so they can shower, clean up, and then it may be easier, we're looking, we haven't chosen a team yet. Once we do, we'll have a discussion, is it easier for them on that given day to be a remote learner for that day? Because I don't want some child from Brookline now feeling obligated to fly over here to get to their first period class, or do we do something where they jump on remote for their first period and then when they, they transition to the building when there's a study or something? So he's got it well at hand, but he really needs teams to be selected, know exactly who we're talking about and why.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, congratulations to the spelling bee winners.
Yeah.
Noel and Anna.
Anya.
Anya, sorry about that. And with the instructional practices steering committee, the wa, the waiting versus. And with the instructional practices steering committee, the waiting versus unwaiting committee did meet today, so Liz and I are on that, but.
So, there was no waiting?
There was no waiting on the waiting committee, but we are kind of in a holding pattern because so much of the subcommittee work goes back to whether or not the class rank changes are put into place because waiting impacts all that stuff, and so does assessment. So, but we did.
We have special attendance today.
What?
We have, we have light attendance at the meeting.
Right, right.
And we're all fed.
So, but we are trying to get it restarted, so thank you for that.
And instructional practice tomorrow.
Oh, and instruct, the instructional practices, the steering committee's tomorrow?
Is tomorrow, right?
No, grading and assessments tomorrow.
Oh, grading and assessment, sorry.
All different names. The steering committee isn't, I haven't heard about that yet.
It says instructional practice slash grading and assessment.
So, grading and assessments tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
So, those are getting up and running again. That's great, thank you. And so, at this point, I think we need to move to program of studies. Is Rick on the phone?
Rick, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, Holly.
That's because I'm from Jersey, we're loud. Okay, so at this point, Rick, we'd love to hear a summary. I mean, you've put it in the packet, but if you could kind of summarize where we, where you are in the program of studies and what you are looking for us to approve or not approve.
So, you, in the packet, you have the walkthrough. I do want to just kind of reiterate that the walkthrough is designed to reflect the past discussion, the preliminary reports, you have the original kind of proposals, and then really kind of what was decided by the working group is indicated under working group. So, just running through the list, starting with computer science, we originally discussed replacing web design with cybersecurity. In the working group, we decided to push this out to give the time for development for curriculum and materials to support the change, and all agreed that it was highly relevant, perhaps more relevant than web design and something that our students might be interested in. So, we're not recommending any changes to computer, to replacing web design for 2021 and 22. Anything else, if there was a change, that would be for the following, which is 22 and 23, if that makes sense. So, no change there for now, at this, tonight. Moving along to English, we're just cleaning up some of the prerequisites to make them more consistent with the other elective, or excuse me, the other subjects like social studies and math, so that they're, they're similar in terms of expectations and are reflective and consistent, it's really a consistency issue. And the working group agreed that it made sense to align the prerequisites across the departments. Moving to math, no changes recommended for math. PE, we recognized quickly that this is more of a budget issue. The position, the .6 position in, is currently in the next year's budget, so it has not been changed or removed, so there really was nothing really for the working group to discuss. It'll either stay in the budget or it won't, and if it doesn't, it doesn't, but that's really a budgetary process, so we left that as it was since it is currently listed in the budget, so there's no change needed for anyone to vote on tonight. As well as school counseling, no changes in the school counseling department that we're looking for. The big one is, I expect, and is one we spent the most time discussing as a working group, as evident in the notes, was the proposed reduction for science credits. There was strong support to keep the science, keep the requirement at three sciences and to discuss kind of like Mrs. Leclair brought up, maybe there's other offerings that we put in there. So, right now, the big issue, we talked quite a bit about anatomy and physiology. The only real change that we'd be looking for is within regular anatomy and physiology to not have chemistry be something that's concurrent in regular anatomy and physiology. It was noted that you did not have to necessarily take chemistry for honors anatomy and physiology, and yet you had to take it for regular anatomy and physiology. So, we thought by, after the discussion, we'd met and felt like if we just removed, made it up to the department chair, and not, chemistry was not necessarily required for anatomy and physiology, that would open things up a little bit and not necessarily force all, as many kids as we have into the chemistry pipeline and still providing them with rigorous science experience while they're at the high school. We did talk about offering more courses down the road, again, not for this year, but moving into potentially offering a heterogeneous environmental science course. Currently, we only offer AP environmental science, and it might be a relevant option to have a regular environmental science. Again, that's not being proposed for next year. So, the really, the only change we're looking for is to originally make sure that the wording of prerequisites for accelerated science courses are aligned, 9 through 12, so that students are progressing to accelerated bio and chemistry in mind for the sophomore year and have, have enough of math skills and allowing a little bit more flexibility and access into the regular anatomy and physiology, because we have any number of students who would like to access that course that may not be able to do so without taking chemistry currently. So, this would free that up, if that makes sense. Moving along to social studies, no changes there, no changes to the visual performing arts, no changes to oral languages. Just a note that we currently use an online platform called Odysseyware to deliver some of our, some curriculum to H.B. in kind of an alternative environment, and we're finding that through trial, there's another package called Edgenuity, and we're looking to shift more of our in-house, online, make that more of our platform. We found there's a lot more flexibility, a bit of a higher cost, but when you look at what we're able to do, that we think it's more of a value for students. And moving on to career tech, we are going to continue, not going to make any changes as it's worded in the current program of studies, but just an awareness that we're going to continue to focus more on Nashua's offerings as opposed to offering everything, every course in all the other CTE programs. They'll still be in the program of studies, but again, there's going to be more guidance to move towards Nashua due to their proximity and their ability to offer more. As well, there's additional courses to, that have qualified New Hampshire scholars, and that's a pretty wide brush that we have, and we're going to open that up even more. We've been offering more and more along those lines, and we're just going to open that up so that more of our students can earn the New Hampshire scholar designation, and we're pretty proud of that, as we typically have more than most schools, and this will be even more, which is good. That is, those are pretty, those are, those are the changes. The one in science, as I mentioned, was just trying to give kids access to something else besides chemistry and not let chemistry be a block for certain things. And again, no change to, no, no reduction in required science credits for a diploma. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Rick. Are there any questions for Rick at this point? Tom?
I'm just trying to figure out if we're going to vote tonight. Do we have anything that we should be looking at from past board meetings to guide us as to what, what language changes actually are going to be in it?
So, Mike? Go ahead, Rick.
No, I couldn't hear what Tom said.
He's wondering if there's anything from past board meetings that we could look at that shows the changes that you're making.
The only thing I provided was a walkthrough.
Right.
So, the only thing that I would say of substance in terms of wording would be along the lines of the prerequisite for anatomy and physiology, and it would change from, currently, I think it's, they have to take chemistry concurrently if they haven't already taken it, and we would just remove, the chemistry would be recommended or permission of the department chair, so they would not need to take chemistry concurrently to take regular anatomy and physiology. That would be really the only, the only change in addition to, so there are no, there is no black line document, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, so I think that's the struggle, is to deliberate on something when we don't have the document in front of us is a challenge. So, what you're basically saying is that the program of studies, from what I'm hearing, the current 20, what year are we?
2021.
2021, the dumpster fire year to 2021, is, is, it's the current program of studies with changes to prerequisite language in English and in, in English, and then prerequisite language in the one course in anatomy and physiology for science and in overall, all accelerated science classes, or no, yes? So, I think that's where the confusion is, right? Because I'm struggling to summarize it.
Yep, I think that's accurate. We're not looking to change, the only, the, that, only prerequisite we would be changing would be the anatomy and physiology, and I shouldn't say only, because in the English department, we're just cleaning some things up a little bit to make them consistent with what the other departments are doing. And this is the same process that we used last year in terms of providing a walkthrough rather than the entire program of studies.
So, we did it this way last year?
Is there any, any change proposed to the introductory language for CTE?
Uh, no, there aren't. We are not making any changes to that.
Thank you.
So, it does, is, is everyone comfortable with voting on it from that perspective? Yes?
So, the question, does anyone have any problems with it from that perspect?
Does anyone have a problem voting, problems with it from that perspective?
Cindy texted me and said that she's okay with us voting on this while Rick's on the phone.
Okay.
We would like to do that. She doesn't.
Need to vote on that, okay.
Who?
Cindy. So, Cindy is not present, but she's going to join us for deliberations, but we, if we'd like to make an agenda adjustment and move the deliberations to now, we could vote on this, and then Rick will have his program of studies, and then he can sign off. Is that good with everyone?
Assuming we approve.
Assuming it's approved. So, I need a motion to approve the high school program of studies as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Is there any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? 6-0-0.
Is Rick offline?
Rick, your.
I'm here, yep, I got it.
Motion has carried.
Rick, thank you very much for responding to last month's conversation and input.
Yes, and to all of the public input regarding chemistry. Sounds like we're.
Yeah, no problem. I think it's a conversation we need to have, and I'm glad we had it and provided clarity, so I think it's well worth it.
Great, thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you, take care.
All right, so, and principal reports are done, right? Thank you so much for presenting them and being our administrator. Do we meet with Tim to say?
We don't.
Mr. Grison, I don't believe we really need you to be here anymore.
But you're welcome to stay.
And, you know, do all that.
He looks hurt and devastated.
He looks so sad. Okay, so at this point, we need to move on to the update on COVID. Is that coming first?
Yes. I wanted to let the co-op board know that I believe that we will be removing the co-op school district to remote learning beginning Monday. My reasoning is based on the most recent case impacted six staff members, and it has really created some difficulty from a staffing level. Our kids have been fabulous, they're doing a great job every day. Bob, Gina, and I have pitched in and covered lunch duties, and we have doubled up studies where we could and things, but it's, it's just becoming a concern because if we double studies, even though we can provide the appropriate social distancing, we bring so many kids together, the same with lunches. My intent would be to do the co-op because it's grade seven to 12, and it has the least impact from a childcare situation for families. I can tell you in talking with seniors and juniors and freshmen at lunch duties, it won't be popular because the children really enjoy being in school, and it's very difficult for me to make this decision because I've seen it firsthand on their interaction. But I think we can deliver very effective curriculum in remote learning because we're doing it right now, we have a number of students. And what we're also seeing is just rates going up. This week alone, just at the middle school, we had 53 new students who were unable to come to school because somebody at home was exposed. So, they are in quarantine. It has resulted in, basically at the middle school, because Rick has been out, our, we started the year at about 81% in school and 19% participating fully remote. Those have changed as of today to, we are 64% in person and 36% fully remote.
Is that at the middle school or the high school?
That's at the middle school. The high school, I'd say, is holding steady more so than the middle school. It's more the staffing at the high school. It's definitely devastated one particular department, which concerns me, and I think it's, it's the right time, and I think, again, it's, to me, this is a short-term approach, would be doing remote from what would be the 14th to the holiday, so the Monday to 21st and 22nd. We would have the holiday period off. We would go fully remote to combat any rise we might see from the Christmas holidays, where we're expecting, based on our surveys, higher travel for families. That may be starting to change a little. I think people are rethinking their decisions as the numbers go up, but I think a number of families made the intentional decision not to travel at Thanksgiving. And then we would come back from January 4th through the 15th, fully remote. Monday, the 18th would be Martin Luther King Day, which would be a day off, and we would return in person on the 19th. We have quite a few staff who would be coming in. We, during the fully remote, we have special education services being delivered on-site for those families who need that or those learners who need that. But at this, this point, this will also allow me to free up some substitutes, which will help me in the other districts to get them to next Friday. So, I'll take any questions on it. As part of our plan, the decision was left up to me. I've talked extensively with Bob and Gina, who have been doing a lot of this work. It's a decision we had hoped to avoid, but we think it's the right decision at the right time, and I would be sending that notice out to families tomorrow to make them alert, and they would have tomorrow and Friday to prepare, and it would all start remote at the co-op level, grade seven through 12 only, beginning Monday. And I'll take any questions or comments.
Tom?
Do you get any indication that a significant portion of the staff will come in to deliver their remote instruction?
Yes, and I think we will see pretty much the staff who is on and able to in the building on a daily basis. They, they very much like having their own technology in their own classroom, and I think it will help us with some childcare issues because what some of the staff has asked to do is, let's say, Bob, myself, and Krista can work it so that during our free period and our prep periods, we cover our, each other's children, then, then we can be online. So, they're also looking at some daycare issues because the other piece that will happen in the relatively near future is some of our other surrounding districts are contemplating this same decision.
So, staff members will be permitted to bring, bring their, their children into the building during that timeframe?
Correct.
Okay, and then the second question I have is, are you reinstituting the breakfast and lunch program?
Breakfast and lunch will be available for every student. If a staff member brings their children in, as long as they're New Hampshire residents, they're covered under the law as well, so they would be fed on-site.
No, I'm thinking of the pickup stuff.
Yes, the pickups is absolutely going to happen, and we're also considering deploying buses to certain locations to make it easier because some of our families live quite a distance away, say, from CSDA, so we might put a bus that arrives at X time, and you'll just have to report there to pick up your lunches.
Thank you.
If we're only running one route, the elementary route, do we save anything on busing?
There might be a minimal savings. I think we would see some savings, Liz, in, is, in two places. One, we'd be going basically a month with the high school and middle school buildings closed, so I can turn down the heat and get those type of savings, and then.
Well, they're not completely closed, right?
No, they're not completely closed, but at the same time, too, it will, it will work because of the volume and differences. And then the, the other piece is, we probably will see some savings in substitutes, because right now, we, we are paying some people to be monitors for the remote teacher who's at home. Now, some of those monitors will be able to be utilized by special ed to help us deliver services. services. Uh, so we'll be balancing that as we go through the next few days.
Just a question. It sounds like you had, it sounded pretty clear for the high school, staffing was the main driving factor, but for the middle school, what's the main driving factor? Because I have had the question asked, if one campus is, you know, able to stay and one's not, you know?
It's, it's still staffing. I mean, we have, um, we've tipped the scales as probably more people, more staff teaching from home than in-person because of quarantines that have come up. Uh, because what doesn't often make it out in terms of notices is, um, if, if my spouse was diagnosed with COVID, uh, and I haven't been in the building, there's no notification, there's no, there's nothing that even says I will get COVID. So a lot of those people are in that, what was 14 days, which is now down to 10-day quarantines. You know, to give you a little breakdown of, of families, uh, 37 of the 53 students that transferred this week were because they were in quarantine or exposure or had COVID. Uh, seven have transitioned to remote for, basically they've told Tim the rest of the year, and nine were just being precautionary. Uh, so I, I think that number's going to continue to grow.
So my only comment is, is that this is just a really sad, hard time. And I appreciate you making the decisions that you have to make every day and all of your staff. And it's really, um, I, I mean, I, I 100% support what you're saying about closing, going remote on Monday. I completely support it. I just wish we weren't here. I wish it was different. But I can't, you know?
You can't change reality.
Can't change reality. So, um, and I hope that, you know, this gives everyone, because I do think that the stress and the tension of this is being felt by our students and by our staff and having some time to work remotely and to not be dealing every day with that sort of tension. I hope that will encourage us to reopen on January 19th because that's incredibly important that we get started and go again. Because our kids are really, really benefit from being in the building. And the transmission in the building doesn't seem to be happening. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a medical person, but it just, it's not, they're not unsafe in the building. They're wearing masks, they're consistently wearing masks. It's not a safety issue. It's just obviously cases are going and quarantining and whatever, so, yeah. And just, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, we will be starting sports next week, the 14th, for tryouts. Uh, teams are to be selected by next, the weekend of the 18th. And then we actually go on a, a two-week, uh, staff of sports and then resume on January 4th. So they'll be doing sports and activities and clubs, uh, when we're in remote again.
And we will still be busing some sports?
We will not have a need to start busing until after the new year because no games would start till mid-January.
Right.
But there definitely will be some instances of busing.
Well, and practice busing.
I was just going to say, I echo what Holly says in terms of, you know, supporting this. I, you know, my only reservation besides just being sad, and that's not, that's not enough of a reason, I just, I, I very much want to be back in, you know, January as planned, but, um, there, we're not seeing transmission at this point, knock on wood in the schools. And numbers are going to continue to go up and some of this stuff is going to get harder. And I really, really believe every single day in-person for the students that are choosing that is a gift. And, um, and I see, I see the tension is so high, I see it's all high. I just, I really hope that, um, you know, we're, you know, able to come back because these, even this next five days, those are gifts if we could have been here. And I, I just think that some of this is going to get tougher. And, you know.
And it's, it's, it's very difficult on our students. I mean, being in the building the last four days, uh, kids are getting their acceptances to college. Uh, there's so many positive things going on. And just watching them at lunch, you know? And they're doing a fantastic job. I mean, they, they obey the protocols, they do everything correct. It's just, um, when you look at a high school or middle school lunch compared to an elementary lunch, it's just different by its nature. You know, we have, call it 100 kids in the cafeteria and 100 kids in the gym, so we have the spacing. But if it does come in, that's where it's going to, to hit and potentially hit us hot. Now, it hasn't done that with students, but we are definitely there with staffing.
But when you say we're there with staffing, it's because people have to quarantine, not because we've seen a number, a lot of cases of staff members getting COVID. It's more that we've seen staff members have been exposed to COVID and, and need to, because of whatever the cases. I just want to be clear, I don't want anyone in the public to think that we've had a, had a cluster of staff members get sick, that's an, or get COVID. It's just been more, it's a quarantine issue, right? Am I, am I accurate in saying that?
At this point, it's a quarantine issue, waiting to see.
Okay.
If there's the potential for those staff members to contract.
Okay.
We've got four staff members who have tested positive for COVID since the start of the school.
Four staff members.
Out of 13 total confirmed cases.
Is that just the cohort, you're just saying the whole?
In the cohort, the middle school and the high school.
Four confirmed staff out of the 13 cases.
Four confirmed staff out of 13. And across the district, we've had 24 total cases, which in comparison to, um, any other district is incredibly low. Again, it's a staffing issue, it is not.
It's not, it's not a transmission issue. It's not a transmission issue, it's just a staff. Because every time, if a, if a staff member's been exposed or been around or been in contact with a student, then they have to stay home for 14 days or 10 days.
I was having a conversation with a, a parent in another district, uh, today, and they had indicated that in their district, the number of cases they had in a single day is more than we've had in the co-op all year, just for some perspective.
Right. Liz, did you?
Well, I, I wanted to thank Andy because he did the one thing that I had asked, which was that if we were going to have to make this decision, we'd be able to give the kids a couple of days' notice. Um, because I think the anxiety of not, of each day not knowing whether you're going to get to return the next day is, is a, is a real thing. Um, and so I think this gives them predictability and they, you know, they get notice in the morning that they've got two days. Um, we've given them also the ability to sort of say goodbye for, for a month. And I really appreciate that because I do think that's part of what's causing the kids the anxiety is every morning they, you know, come to school not knowing that this is the last day and they walk out the door not knowing that they're going to get to come back tomorrow. Um, and I think, I, I almost think that maybe just being able to take a break from that, because even every time we get a health notice, the kids are all kind of looking at each other, are we next in line? Are we going to get a call from the administration? Are we going to be quarantined? Um, just to take that off of their plate may be, um, also a relief. I, I mean, we, we did much better than any of us thought we were going to do. Um, you know, if we all, any of us had a magic wand, we'd just snap it and we would be out of this, but I'm really proud of the fact that we've made it to December.
Mm-hmm. I think, yeah, I, I think on that too, I agree. It's, that's a, that's a big part of the stress. And I think the other stress that I keep hearing from students, and, you know, it's a direct question from middle school and high schoolers is, well, the last time we went remote, look what happened, we didn't come back. And that's why I keep, you know, saying over, like, and I know more, more information will come out to families and parents, but part of that is to continue to be diligent during this time off, continue with symptom checks as we get closer to coming back in January, because we need to know not how students are doing on January 19th. We need to know their health status and what, how they've been doing for the 10 days prior, really. So, um, not to be disruptive to families and, and give families that time, but to just continue to be diligent because that's the one other anxiety we see, besides not knowing, are we going to just suddenly go to remote, is are we going to come out of remote and be able to be back in a similar situation, is what we've been able to maintain, so.
And just for the people at home, you know, when I say the staffing issues, what's happened is many other districts have closed.
Right.
So our staff does not have daycare for their own children, so they've moved to remote. And we're putting monitor, monitors into those rooms. And then certain individuals, uh, because of their own medical health or maybe somebody at home, when X number of cases or things happened in a school, they had their qualified doctor's notes that they now needed to move to fully remote themselves. So, you know, our staff has done tremendous. Um, I can tell you that there, you know, all the people that are in don't necessarily want to go to remote. They really enjoy being with the kids. But I think everybody gets it. And, and my hope is that really that, uh, in our two communities, we can do what we've done in the past, which is really lower those numbers, which are not exceptionally high because of all the hard work we've been doing. Uh, and, you know, from the January 4th through the 15th, uh, I'll be sending out a notice asking families to continue with the symptom monitoring piece, so that we'll get daily information every day, so that when we get to the 15th, we can make an informed decision if we can reopen or not reopen.
Just not at 6:45 in the morning.
Correct. We're going to give you a little more flexibility on that.
Okay.
Do you have a comment?
No.
Just a question, thinking about reentry, do we have the ability to require, um, a negative test, such as the colleges were doing before the beginning of the semester?
I would advise strongly against that, but I don't know if we even have the legal means to.
We don't at this point. You know, I know there's a lot of talk about testing coming out and schools getting testing. I don't know if families would participate in that. And I can't see it being a, a reason to not have somebody attend school unless the state passed something.
I have, um.
I, I think what you do is you, starting, um, soon as you close the schools, take a couple of dead fish and let them marinate, put them at the front door, and anyone who doesn't get sick walking in, gets sent home.
So, um, two more comments. Number one, so, um, I know you said staff will be, um, present in the buildings, is that I would, would love to see, I know you can't mandate this and specify certain staff, but it would be great if there was a counselor available in the building, you know? Um, whether there's a rotation, I know right now, you know, I know that there are circumstances that prevent people from being in the buildings and I understand that, but, um, I am concerned about our students' mental health and sometimes it would be nice to be able to even, you know, go see someone if they needed to. Um, and then I just want to clarify for the public that when we talk about remote learning, we're talking about the remote learning that was spelled out in our reopening plan. And so that's a, a more synchronized approach than what we had in the spring. So it's a different, a little bit different structure than what we had. It is a different structure than what we had in the spring. So the expectation for families, if you're listening out there, is that, you know, your students will be signing on and, and being in class.
Yep.
According to the bell schedule, the current bell schedule. So that's.
That's correct.
Does our counseling department have, um, the ability to schedule appointments with kids, um, virtually, like a appointment schedule?
Yes, yes, that's, that's, in some instances across, you know, say, you already happening, uh, and they're zooming for one, one-on-one individual sessions and things like that.
Good.
But I think, you know, that, I don't think we'll be like locking down our buildings like we did the last time. So I think there'll be more flexibility, so if a, a child forgot something, there's no panic come Friday afternoon. They'll just have to call up and we'll, we'll schedule a time for them to come in and get whatever they need from their locker and things like that. And again, we're going to have our athletes in, so we're going to have a very, much a flow of our building, it's just, uh, we're, we're going to take a pause and let our staff get healthy.
I was just thinking more, if Johnny decided they might like to talk to a counselor because of college decisions or just they were having a bad day and.
I assume they would be available virtually. I just was, I don't know, there's something about an in-person, um, counseling contact.
Yep, we could definitely look at that.
I mean, just having a little bit of information and expertise in that area.
Yeah, no, I would absolutely agree. I think it would be a great thing to, you know, pursue.
Just to have one person in there, even if it's not your counselor, sometimes you just need to see a human being. Okay, especially because now that's pretty much what we're all craving. Um, so at this, is there any other questions about COVID? About our update on COVID? Lots of questions about COVID, but, um, all right, so, uh, the, let's move on to the budget discussion.
Sure. First, I, we, I walked in tonight, the, uh, expense and revenue report. The reason we walked it in is because we were waiting to find out what we were going to get from the supplemental funds. I, I do want to let the board know from the variety of sources, whether it was the $200 per student, the, the recent supplemental funds, our various grants, our CARES Act funds that were out there. Presently, the co-op district has gotten $319,0728.37. And I'd like to, you know, publicly thank, uh, Bob, Gina and Kelly for all the work behind the scenes to make sure that those grants are in, uh, have the required information and that we're able to turn those around. Presently, the revenue and expense report puts us in good shape. We're looking right now of, um, having year-to-date expenses of $7,505,565. We have another $16,761 in, excuse me, in $81, which means that right now, we have a balance, we're projecting a balance, and it's very early, of $842,073. When I look at the revenue side, um, about the similar projection in the sense that we're, we're doing well and our revenues are on target. So we are looking at a potential, just a minimal shortfall of $22,182. So when I look at those right now, we'd have an unreserved fund balance of $819,884. We use just the, the warrant articles from last year to be able to give you a projection to see that. So last year, the athletic trust was $67,000, the maintenance trust was $200,000, the special ed trust was $25,000, the contingency is annually $100,000, and we get a retained fund balance of $189. Those all totaled up would give us, uh, $581,000. So we're projecting a fund balance of $238,884. Now, the pieces from a budget standpoint, uh, the, the big piece is in facilities, it's about $55,000 over. And that's simply, that's where all your COVID supplies are. And those are the COVID projections for the second half of the year. We're hoping that if there's some sort of new stimulus passed via Congress that comes to the state, that we'd have the ability to either the governor applying, uh, a dollar amount per student or supplemental funds to apply for, again, to reduce those. But we're, we're sitting pretty solid right now. And again, I can't thank Linda Sherwood, Kelly and all the ladies upstairs who, who day in and day out, uh, monitor the budget. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you think I can answer. Because I'm not sure I can answer any. If you think I can, I'll try.
Does the, uh, the grant, the COVID grant money show anywhere on the revenue page yet?
The COVID grant money is included, um, in the expense and revenue reports. I'm trying to think. I would have to defer to Kelly, she actually told me that this afternoon, I've already forgotten it, I should have written it down.
Is it in the 260 for the federal grants or is that just typical money that we get?
That's the typical IDEA grant.
What I'm getting at, Andy, is, is will we in fact likely see a larger balance if we continue on the path that we're at because of the, the grants?
There's that potential. It would really come down to staffing. If we, um, had to replace somebody for a long-term sub or things like that, the second half of the year. We do have a couple of projected maternity leaves and things that will, uh, increase our substitute lines. So that's really, the COVID supplies and the personnel pieces are the two, what I'd say volatile pieces that we're not 100% sure of right now.
Are the personnel items, um, can grant money be used on them?
Yes, what we just received, part of that $11,000 we received was to offset some of the costs of the, the monitors that we had brought on. The first round of the $200 per student, that went to cover a significant portion of the monitors and those type of subs. The $11,000 was more of that. And we're hoping that, again, if it opens up, we'll have from January to June, because you can only do expenses until December 31st.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, I think you have more on the budget now?
I do. I'll skip over the annual meeting calendar that was in the packet, only because we're going to eat with Drew and probably make adjustments to that.
Right.
Uh, next, I wanted to walk you through the FY '22 budget. I'm going to just run you quickly through the, the new items rounds. In terms of personnel, re-envision, continuing to push for the SAU-directed facility sub, a custodian. We see the SAU-directed food service sub and the SAU-directed instructional sub, uh, kind of falling off the wayside because those are shared costs and there are other budgets that will not be able to support those. We also have kind of proven that we believe we could move to a permanent sub again next year if we had to, because we have that flexibility in the substitute line. So you will see that coming out probably in round four of both the high school and the middle school, which will reduce the budget another $34,600. Also coming out under academics is the social studies textbooks. The state of New Hampshire has still not finalized social studies curriculum. And Gina does not want to go out and purchase textbooks until we know exactly what the requirements are going to be. So we're going to delay those, uh, so that $24,000. So we're going to delay those. Uh, so that $24,000 will be coming out. So that will result in those couple cuts of $58,600. The only kind of what I'll say, um, other pieces that we're looking at is on the next page under the shared services and software, we're looking at GoGuardian, which is a, um, 7 through 12 tool for, uh, Chromebooks that will provide more filtering for students. Uh, we believe those costs are going to go up. We had originally talked about GoGuardian being a K to 12 product. We just don't see the benefit from K to six. So that sharing will allow that to, uh, go up a little bit, but not a ton. We're still making a determination on the camera for the turf field that may come out of the barn. We're, we're waiting for some of the final expenses around, uh, bleacher work and, and lighting work and things like that to come in before we, uh, make that final decision. So really, we don't see a, a wealth of cuts. And going to the final page, right now, our operating budget is increasing by $662,174 for 2.81. That does not include the reductions that I've talked about tonight. The other piece it doesn't include is we'll be going through and reviewing the retirements. Uh, we didn't receive retirements. We always had put money into the budget. So that will be, uh, being discounted slightly as well. You see the other articles we're expecting, uh, the contingency, the SAU assessment, uh, the athletic trust, the maintenance trust and the special ed. And if you look at round 3.1, that is what we're looking at. So you'll see maintenance trust, it's gone from $200,000 to $215.
Are you?
I'm on the, the last page, Tom. You have the, uh, round 4.1 for FY '21.
Yeah.
So that gives you last year's warrant articles, 3.1 of the warrant articles we're proposing. So we have blanks in there right now for HEA and HESA. And then we have lowered the athletic revolving fund, which we'll be putting articles to change that over as we've discussed with the board. So that'll go from $67,000 in FY '21 to $50,000 in FY '22. Maintenance trust will go from $200,000 down to $115. So your overall warrant total would be $607,994 for a 2.44% increase. Again, that doesn't include the $58,600 that I talked about, uh, the retirement money. Now, the only thing that, um, we're in discussions, we did get our, uh, testing back uh, from our 11th graders. And we're a little concerned, uh, like everywhere across the country. The math results were not as strong as we typically see them. So Gina and I are having some discussions about would we wanna put in some money into this budget to be doing things this coming summer, next fall during the evening, targeting that specific group of students. I'm not too worried about everybody else because we have time to catch up. But from juniors, you know, uh, the group that is presently juniors that would be next year's seniors, uh, we may wanna look at some, uh, focused, I'll call them like workshops on specific topics. We're still in discussions, but that would be some money that would be taken from that savings I just talked about and putting it into the budget. But that's not finalized yet. But we were, I mean, our data was good. We actually went up in reading and language arts, uh, overall from last year's scores. But math did take a dip.
How much?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember, but it was, it was a concern.
Is that, do you have any idea if that was a nationwide trend?
It was. Yeah, it was.
I, I think it has to be and just across the board. And I don't think it's limited to the co-op. I just don't think it's possible to get through as much curriculum.
Right. You know, I, I just feel more comfortable having more time. So my focus point would be on the, the kids who have the shortest amount of time with us. If you're a, uh, like a fourth grader right now, I have plenty of time to catch you up from a mathematical point of view. If, even if you're a freshman, sophomore and you, and you miss some of the concepts in geometry and algebra, I know they're coming back as juniors and seniors and the teachers can emphasize those. But it may be something we do for the next couple of years, but it's just something we're looking at right now uh, to see if we can, uh, fill a gap.
But the cohort that took that test is actually our current seniors.
That, that's not the group we're looking for. We're looking for the, the kids who, uh, who are, are current juniors.
But it's a little confusing because it wasn't, they took it in the beginning of their senior year, but it was their 11th grade test. So, um, we might wanna keep in mind that even if those students have left us, maybe we can even offer like something to kids to feel, um, comfortable going into math in college or some sort of workshops or something. Yeah.
Do we expect our current juniors will get tested at a more normal time this year?
In March.
Yes, we expect them to take the test in March.
And when would you likely expect results from that?
It's usually maximum like four to six weeks, Tom. Pretty quick.
So you'll have that information before the end of the school year?
Right. So we, we'd be able to target either summer or fall.
So the, because, picking up on what Holly said, we know that our spring instruction was not where we wanted it to be. So potentially, the, the current junior class has had a, a year to, to recover. Maybe, maybe we can keep our fingers crossed.
Right. And, and maybe one of these things where we put money in the budget, it doesn't become a reality and it, it just doesn't get spent and it goes to the bottom as returned to the taxpayers. It's just more that, uh, we have some phenomenal math teachers that I think would step up and offer what I'll call specific topics. Cause I think what we'll be able to do from the testing is isolate areas of concern.
But if you are gonna put the money in, I think you need to earmark it pretty, in a pretty detailed manner rather than just put it in as a chunk in case.
Right. No, and we'll walk the budget committee through that. We, you know, again, it's just something, I wanna say it's a week or 10 days ago that we got the data back and we really haven't had too much time to discuss it, other than to know we weren't, you know, we, we had some concerns around math.
Just, uh, a question for Kate. Kate, do you know, does, does the V-Lax organization collect similar data? Do you know if, if that's publicly available or, or is there any indication that, that they experienced a similar? What I'm getting at is I'm wondering if, um, if, uh, purpose-built, uh, remote instruction performed differently than, than places that did it on a contingency basis?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. I mean, we can't make the testing results public, school to school. I don't think that they do that in terms of across the board, like with other schools. I, so that's a hard one for me to answer, but I think it's a great question.
Our test results in aggregate are public knowledge. So I didn't know if, if, if the V-Lax organization, if their aggregate test results were, were public.
Yeah, good question. I don't, I wouldn't know exactly how to determine that. I mean, obviously, V-Lax is set up as an online curriculum. So the curriculum has just been different versus what happened last spring. It's really hard to compare the two because our curriculum isn't in-school curriculum.
Right. I'm just wondering, can anyone reach out and see if that data's available?
We could, we can absolutely. I'll, I'll talk to Gina and we'll see what comparisons are.
In the meantime, it sounds like you have a strategy to reconcile some of it, which is really important.
Right.
And that families need to be aware of that. That's great.
We, we are presently below guidance, which is the, the budget committee's determination of the number they wanted us to reach. And that was at a multiplier of zero this year. So, uh, you know, the, the budget and the work with the budget committee has gone really well. Kelly has handled that day-to-day operation. So again, so we can isolate people from being at multiple meetings. Uh, and I have been providing regular updates and working with the chair of the Bugcom as well.
So appreciate Kelly's efforts. Um, and of course, we are at guidance or below guidance right now, but that is, does not include any contract, any.
That's correct. Guidance is just on the operating budget.
The SAU assessment?
Yep.
Is that just, has that been updated recently, you know?
Yes.
Standee check?
Yes. I think it's still, um, might still be slightly low, Tom. And in 4.0, we'll have it because, uh, the budget subcommittee for the SAU had not finalized what we were presenting to the SAU board. That'll get presented the 17th and then Kelly will use the formula and put in exact amounts. But it's, it's pretty close.
Okay. I just didn't want it to be a number that came out of pre-COVID estimates.
No, no, it's a pretty solid number.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we'll move on to, you have under discussion diversity, equity and inclusion update. You kinda went over that during correspondence. So do you need to, any more of that?
I do not.
Okay.
Just again, that the information is online for anybody looking for the minutes or the draft resolution.
I do wanna report back that the policy committee has been, um, on our agenda. One item that we've sort of held off on is a, is looking at any kind of transgender policy because of, or policy related to that, because of the work you're doing in diversity, equity and inclusion. And we assume that there'll be some sort of information coming from you on that.
Correct.
Okay. Great. So we're gonna keep it as a secondary item on the agenda of the policy committee? And it'll come to the surface of actually being on our agenda when we've got more information from you guys on that.
Perfect.
It makes sense, right?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we have moved on to deliberations. This is great. I need a restroom break, so let's move through this quickly. Um, so we did the first one already. Um, so at this point, we need to bring to the floor and then we can talk about it once we bring it to the floor. But I need a motion. Yeah. Oh, get Cindy. Yeah, sorry. Please pull Cindy. Oh, actually, you know what? And then I have to have her do the electronic thing. Thank you. We're gonna bring school board member Cindy Van Conant in.
We're ahead of schedule. Do you want a five-minute break?
I really do. We want a five-minute break. Can we take a